I'd like to call Lord to the regular city council meeting of Monday, April 25th, 2011 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here, council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith absent. Harrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City manager Carey.
Here.
City attorney Cheryl Iding.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, next we have the invocation. Is Pastor Pete Bossler in the audience? Yes, he is. If you'd all stand for the invocation, please. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. You guys weathered the storm. You're on the good side. Thank you, Lord. And we came through a winter, not just winter in our season, but a winter of disappointing, difficult financial aspects. But this city council, through the mayor's leadership, did a good job. Now, God, we see the spring. We thank you, God, for abundance in our city, for new businesses opening, for new hope. And I know that good things are going to happen. And we pray your blessings upon Sparks. May we see your abundance everywhere we look. Thank you for this meeting. Let your wisdom be upon all the council members and all the staff that is here. And we thank you, Lord, for your greatness above all. In your mighty name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. If you'd all remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Schmidt, would you lead us?
My fellow Americans, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is comments from the public. Anybody want to speak under comments from the public? I have no speaking cards. Okay, moving along. Approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt.
Motion approved.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously with those present. Next is recommendation to approve minutes of regular meeting of April 11th, April 11th, 2011. Any omissions or corrections or deletions? If not, looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the meeting minutes of April 11th, 2011. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, next is a proclamation. Building Safety Month. Mr. Miranda, you want to step up? I'll read the proclamation and then you can say a few words and introduce a few people.
Whereas our city's continuing efforts to address critical safety issues in building, construction, energy efficiency, water conservation, and sustainability give Sparks citizens the confidence to enjoy the comfort of structures that are safe and sound. And whereas building safety officials, architects, engineers, builders, and others in the construction industry work year-round with Sparks citizens to address building safety concerns to ensure the safe construction of all buildings. And whereas the most widely appointed, adopted building safety codes in the nation are used by the city of Sparks, these modern codes provide safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as snowstorms, fires, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month, an international celebration of safe and sensible structures, the theme for Building Safety Month 2011 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of importance of building safety, green and sustainable buildings, pool, spa, and hot tub safety, and new technologies in construction and industry. And whereas Building Safety Month 2011 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas Building Safety Month is an opportunity to educate Sparks citizens and acknowledge the essential services provided by Sparks building officials in protecting lives and property. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 11th, 2011, or May 2011, Building Safety Month.
Thank you, Mayor and council. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the building staff, building safety staff. Our outstanding staff has shown resilience to the changes of the economic downturn over the last five years. They've shown a willingness to cross-train and help each other out in all aspects of the building and safety activity. I've always appreciated the capability they show when asked to take on more responsibilities as our staffing levels have decreased. Can I have you guys stand up? First, I'd like to introduce Kurt Weagle. He's our senior plans examiner. Next, Lee Miles. He's our senior building inspector. And Teresa Parkhurst, our office specialist who does the day-to-day activities at the front counter. Thank you. May 2011, Building Safety Month, an international celebration of safe and sensible structures. Building Safety Month 2011 will highlight four core themes throughout the entire month of May. Week one, May 1st through the 8th, Energy and Green Building promotes building with a conscious effort to minimize negative impacts on our environment and increase energy efficiency in our buildings. Week two, May 9th through the 15th, Disaster and Safety Mitigation. This week promotes preparedness in the event of a natural or man-made disaster. As shown in the recent Japan earthquake, modern building codes helped save millions of lives. Week three, May 16th through the 22nd, Fire Safety Awareness. This week sponsors awareness and education of electrical, gas, and building safeguards against fires. Fires take lives and destroy structures resulting in mounting costs and have enormous impact on families, communities, and businesses. Week four, May 23rd through the 31st, Backyard Safety. As summer approaches, homeowners need to take the time to check their outdoor areas for potential safety hazards. Decks that collapse and drownings in swimming pools, hot tubs, and spas take too many lives every year. To find more, to find out more about these Building Safety Month themes, you can go to www.buildingsafetymonth.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any comments, questions? Thanks for all the hard work that you folks do. Mark, we appreciate everything that you do for the city of Sparks. Thanks. Okay, next is a commendation to Judy Henderson. I'm going to have Mr. Mayberry say a couple words and then Judy, if you'd come on up. Then I'll have Mr. Lawson read the commendation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. Adam Mayberry, the city's community relations manager. For the record, it's a pleasure for me to introduce to you Judy Anderson to my left. Judy was recently recognized by the University of Nevada and received a Truman Scholar, became a Truman Scholar, and that's a fairly prestigious award that nobody at our university has received since 1985. And it will allow her to pursue her graduate education. She is currently the chair of the city's advisory committee for the disabled. And she's also active in a lot of civic and community organizations. And I know it was very important for the mayor to recognize you at today's meeting. Thank you.
Congratulations, Judy. I'm going to have Mr. Lawson, because he's liaison to your committee, read the commendation for you. Go ahead, Ed.
Thank you. Whereas Judy Henderson has served as chair of the Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled since 2010. And whereas Judy was recently recognized at, as the University of Nevada, as Reno's 2011 Truman Scholar, and was among 602 candidates nominated for this prestigious national scholarship. And whereas Judy is the first UNR student since 1985 to receive the scholarship and will use it for her graduation, graduate education. And whereas the city of Sparks is grateful to Judy for her volunteerism and civic engagement, particularly in advocating on issues related to persons with disabilities. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, join with the city council in commending Judy Henderson for her hard work and scholastic achievements, and thank her for her service to the city of Sparks.
Please say a few words, Judy, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor Martini. Thank you very much, Councilman Lawson. And actually, Councilman Smith, who's not here, wrote one of my letters of reference. And having the city council and the city of Sparks support me in this way is very important. I've worked a long time in the field of advocacy for people with disabilities. And with my graduate program in 2012, in the fall of 2012, I will focus on public policy and healthcare policy specific to advocacy for people with disabilities. And the Truman Award is, it is amazing. And it is a living memorial to President Truman, as opposed to just having his face on Mount Rushmore. This is what they started in 1975. And it is an honor, a big honor, to have received this. After 26 years, UNR has it back, and UNLV isn't going to take it away from us. But thank you so much.
You're welcome. I read about it in the paper, and I immediately sent Mr. Mayberry a little email and said, you know, we need to do something, because this is really a tremendous achievement by you, a citizen of the city of Sparks, and working as a volunteer too is really great. Any other comments from anybody?
Thank you.
Again, congratulations. We appreciate it. Okay, next is proclamation for National Train Day. Is there supposed to be someone here to get this for? Come on down, gentlemen. I didn't see that back there. Okay, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, then give you a few minutes to say a few words. Proclamation. Whereas on May 10th, 1869, in Utah, the Golden Spike was driven into the final tie that joined the Central Pacific and Union Pacific Railways, creating the first transcontinental railroad. And whereas that transcontinental railroad was a fundamental factor in the growth and success of Sparks, Nevada, which soon became known as the Rail City. And whereas Amtrak's celebration of National Train Day is to raise awareness of the vital role rail plays in nations' transportation system. And whereas trains continue to be the go-to mode of transportation for people and goods, and continue to be a cultural force that sparked creative imaginations as an American icon. And whereas more than just a great way to travel, Amtrak is energy efficient. Traveling by rail contributes less per passenger mile to greenhouse gas emissions than cars and planes. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2011, as National Train Day. Congratulations.
To begin with, I would like to underscore that, the emphasis that Sparks is in fact one of the main reasons why the railroad is still existence, along with the city of Reno and the region. My name is Tim Elam, and I'm actually an Amtrak passenger train conductor, and I'm co-coordinating the second annual Reno-Sparks Railroad Days. And this is my co-coordinator, Michael Sterns. And we started this little effort last year on behalf of National Train Day, and we saw it as an opportunity to really create more of a regional-type event. So in reality, what we have here is the Reno-Sparks Railroad Days. And this year, and last year, and we wanted to thank you, we also had some input from Reno Sparks, but from Sparks. Anthea, over at the Heritage Museum, we have her on board, no pun intended, with the project. And we know that this year's event's going to be something where we're going to be able to be a port hole for getting people over to Sparks and walking through your beautiful railroad exhibit here. So it is an opportunity for us to create more of a regional type of an event, and to celebrate the heritage of railroading here in northern Nevada. And thank you very much for having us here today.
At this point, as, you know, Tim has said, pretty much everything we want to do is, this year is our second annual year for the event. But with Anthea, we're going to make this thing, bring it over here into Sparks and get events going on both sides. Tim was reluctant to mention that we did get Truckee to start a train day also for up there, and we're going to be out in Winnemucca next year and stuff like that. So as we get a little bit older, the event will grow up and get bigger too. So we thank you very much for your time and support, and we sure appreciate it.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Go ahead, Judy.
I'd just like another day.
Well, May 7th. In fact, we wanted to pass these out to you, if you could. Michael, can pass these. We have some posters here for you, if you'd like to hang them in your special favorite place to let folks here in Sparks. As the event begins to gain momentum, we really do look forward to more input from the city of Sparks and the various people who have a stake in maintaining and enhancing the future of railroading. A lot of people don't realize, and of course, Amtrak gets a little bit of a bum rap about time schedules and stuff, but just over the last, I would say, the last year and a half or so, on times, on time and departure times have vastly improved, because they've improved the tracks between Winnemucca, for example, and Reno. But it is a regional, or it's a national service from Chicago to Emeryville. So we actually have quite a population of people coming through. And it's underutilized service. You can take the train from Sparks to Truckee and be back in the same, from Reno to Truckee and be back in the same day. So it's something we really would encourage everybody to kind of reacquaint yourself if you have the opportunity to ride on a passenger train.
Great. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Next is 4.4, Presentation on I-80 Design-Bill Project and Impact to the City of Sparks. Who's doing this? Come on up, gentlemen. Just give us your names for the record.
We've got Jason Breda, Granite Construction Company.
And Jeff Leroux, Department of Transportation.
Mayor Martini, council members, thank you for your time this afternoon. My name is Jeff Leroux. I will be the project manager on the I-80 Design-Bill Project from Rob Drive to Vista Boulevard, and I represent the Department of Transportation.
Thank you as well, Mr. Mayor. My name's Jason Breda. I'm with Granite Construction Company. I'm excited to be back in northern Nevada. I was involved in the management staff on the Reno Retract project. And I've since left and spent five years working on alternative procurement projects in the state of Utah. I'm really glad to be back here on this little, we hope to be, is a very exciting and well-managed project.
This ought to be nothing compared to that one, huh?
We'll see. They all have their own challenges. Thought it was kind of appropriate, the National Train Day, because I had three years of Train Day when I was on the Retract, so. So we're going to, we're going to spend hopefully about 10 minutes going through an overview of the project. So up on the screen here, that's the project limits. So on the west end is Rob Drive, and on the east end is Vista Boulevard. So the overall project limits are about 10 miles. Okay, so this graphic here is a breakdown of the scope of the project. So I'm just going to briefly go through each of these concepts. So Concept 1 is what's shown in the yellow there is the reconstruction of I-80 from Keystone to Fourth Street. So really, that's the only section of this roadway that hasn't been recently repaved. So we're going to completely remove and restore all of the pavement in that section. Concept 2 is the ITS infrastructure. So we're going to put in the infrastructure and the components for a new intelligent transportation system for the state of Nevada. We'll be running a new fiber optic trunk line along both sides of the freeway, the full length of the project. So we've got about 20 miles of fiber optic cable and conduit to install. Concept 3 is the signing and striping upgrades from Rob to Vista. So not only will we be replacing pavement downtown, but we'll be upgrading the striping and the signs throughout the corridor to bring them up to current MUTCD standards. Concept 4 is the restriping of I-80 eastbound to I-580 southbound ramp. So that's currently a single-lane off-ramp. We'll be taking that to a dual lane. Concept 5, Virginia Street westbound off-ramp. That ramp will also go from a single-lane off-ramp, as it currently stands, to a two-lane off-ramp. Let's see. Concept 6 is to widen East McCarran Boulevard eastbound off-ramp. Concept 7 is some storm jam improvements at the Rob Drive eastbound on-ramp to I-80. And we're also doing some grading improvements to the, that kind of that mound of dirt between the eastbound off and the eastbound on to improve the safety of that on-ramp. Concept 8, Sparks Boulevard northbound to I-80 westbound loop ramp. So we'll be adding a new loop ramp where there currently isn't one. So that'll add a free right for northbound to westbound traffic to free up some of that backup going northbound. Concept 9 will be adding auxiliary lanes from East McCarran to Vista. Concept 10, be widening Rock Boulevard eastbound off-ramp from a single-lane off-ramp to a dual-lane off-ramp. And then Concept 11 will widen the Rob Drive westbound off-ramp, also from a single-lane to a dual-lane off-ramp. And then also as part of the project is a project-wide landscaping and aesthetic improvements. Okay, so let me spend a little bit of time explaining what you're looking at here. So you can see there's dates on the left-hand margin. So from the bottom up is 2011 through 2012. So that's time over the length of the project. So if you look at it, you can see that what we're planning to accomplish this year would to be, is the improvements at Rob Drive. We're planning to build half of the section downtown from Fourth to Keystone. Going to build the auxiliary lanes from McCarran to Vista. And we're going to start on some of that work for the loop ramp improvements. And then we'll complete the rest of that, rest of the project next year. So it's planned to be a two-season construction project. And I'll just spend a little more time talking about some of the concepts I already discussed earlier. So Concept 6 is taking that single lane to a dual-lane off-ramp. Currently, we're looking to do that within the existing footprint. If that turns out to work out that way through final engineering, that should be a relatively quick improvement, effectively just a mill and overlay and restripe, not very intrusive. Concept 8, as I discussed, it's the addition of the new loop ramp there. And we'll also be taking the eastbound off-ramp to a triple left. So again, that will be done within the existing footprint through a mill and overlay. Why you saw the loop ramp as a two-season construction effort is there's some anticipated large settlements in there. So we'll embank that, and it has to settle for three to four months before we put the final surfacing on. So we'll, you'll see a lot of the grading going on this year, and then we'll get it paved and opened up next year. And there'll also be some improvements on Sparks Boulevard. So where that existing glue-down median island will get realigned to accommodate that free right and eliminating that left turn from northbound to westbound. Also, what's not shown on here is the Sparks Boulevard westbound on will be extending the length of that taper to increase the safety of that on-ramp. Concept 9, as we mentioned, that's the addition of the auxiliary lanes from East McCarran to Vista. We're going to accomplish that through, by infilling the median. So we'll be removing and salvaging that existing guardwell and relocating that downtown where we need some new guardrail installations and putting in a median barrier. So that work, as I mentioned, is going to, is scheduled to be done this year.
So with all this work comes maintenance of traffic or traffic control. As part of the plan, I-80 will have two lanes in each direction operational during the peak hours. There will be some ramp closures and some lane closures on I-80 in non-peak hours, typically between 10 o'clock and 9:00 and 5:00 in the morning. There will also be some shoulder closures that happen both in the daytime and the nighttime. There will be extensive coordination with those special events with all of the project stakeholders in Sparks and Reno. As Jason alluded to, there will be a landscape and aesthetics plan, and it will adhere to the I-80 landscape and aesthetic master plan. We'll work extensively with stakeholders to develop these plans. This is another slide on landscape and aesthetics. Intelligent transportation systems. Jason spoke about this also. We worked pretty extensively with Sparks staff to get some of their ideas in place regarding the signals, the signal upgrades, and some of the communication efforts between Sparks and Endo. These intelligent transportation system elements, some of them include real-time customizable traffic and project information, and the addition of DMS signs, which stands for Dynamic Message Signs. And those are used to alert motors of travel times, or you've probably seen them out there too with Amber Alerts. That's how we use those signs. The project website is listed right there, keeprenosparksmoving.com. Below that's the project hotline. We will have a public information meeting on Wednesday, May 11th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., which you are all invited to, at the McKinley Arts Center. I don't know where that is right offhand.
It's right downtown.
Oh, right downtown, right downtown Reno. First time in Keystone, thank you. And like I said, that's on May 11th from 4:00 to 7:00. And I think that pretty much wraps it up. If there's any questions that you guys have of us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments?
Mike?
Hey, go back to option 8 real quick. Because that was the loop at Sparks.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm guessing that you're going north on Sparks Boulevard, and you loop around at I-80 going west, right? So are you going to take away the left turn up by the light?
Yes.
So it's right in, right turn only?
Yeah. So it'll do a couple of things. It gets rid of that left turn, and it'll accommodate three, through lanes.
Yeah, okay.
Lots of better traffic movement.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things we're trying to mitigate there, in the northbound direction, we can get some trucks queuing up in there, and they spill over into the through lane. So by keeping the trucks to the right, they can make that loop ramp, and hopefully it'll clean that area up a little bit.
Okay, great. Thanks.
That's great. Anybody else? Anyone else? Okay. Okay, thanks, gentlemen, you got something, Julia?
I'm sure you're on this, the part along I-80 that's right along the Marina, isn't it also part of the flood project? And is there anything that we're doing here that would affect its status as a levy for any of that piece of the flood project?
Mr. Carey?
Is it worth just bringing it up now?
Mr. Cruts?
Of course. Thanks. For the record, Neil Cruts, Acting Community Services Director. The portion of Interstate 80 along the Marina is recognized by FEMA as a levy-like structure, providing protection for that area, and we have coordinated with DOT and with their contractor Granite Construction, and they're, they're not going to be doing anything in there that's going to jeopardize our designation as a levy-like structure.
Thanks, Neil.
Anyone else? You bucking to get on the flood control committee?
Please, no.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much, we appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, let's move on to consent items, 5.1 through 5.6, I believe. Anybody wanna pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I can make, make a motion, we approve consent items 5.1 to 5.6, as outlined in my staff.
Of second, Ms. Ratty.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the agenda items 5.1 through 5.6, consent items. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next, we'll move on to general business. Consideration and possible approval of Bill Number 2634, creating an ordinance of the City Council of Sparks, Nevada, authorizing the issuance by the city of its consolidated tax revenue refunding bond, Series 2011. Mr. Kronk.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Bringing before you today a ordinance to issue approximately $4.2 million of a consolidated tax revenue refunding bond. If you recall, back in November, I believe it was November 22nd, we brought this ordinance to you, in essence, the same ordinance, but it was under the calendar year of 2010 to issue these refunding bonds. And if you recall, the market conditions were, well, pretty lousy back then to issue bonds, and they've since settled down, so we're bringing this back for you, essentially to finish the deal, if it were. So, so we, looking to close this sale as of on or around May 12th, and if you approve this bond ordinance, we'll save approximately $171,000 over the course of the issuance, which is about seven years until they mature in 2018. So, with that, I'm looking for your approval to save some money.
So, that's why we're doing it, is?
And that's why we're doing it, because the interest rates are a little bit lower, and we'll take advantage of it, so with that, take some questions.
Questions? Mr. Kerrigan? No?
Yeah, thanks, I was trying to figure out what, Jeff, refresh my, sorry, refresh my memory on what these bonds were used for.
Oh, boy, several things, there's actually several projects that they were used for, for the downtown redevelopment area.
Okay, that's what it was, it was downtown redevelopment, and we put up C-Tax for that.
Yeah, in the Victorian Square area.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Well, my, oh.
Yeah, there it goes, go ahead.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, to just go over a couple of facts and make sure I understand, is that life of the bond's not changing?
Correct.
We have six years, that stays the same. But I don't find that where the interest rate is dropping, what, what is the existing rate, what is the new?
Current existing rate is about 4.09%, and it's dropping to 3.05%.
Okay, all right, so, and there's no cash coming to the city or anything else like that, it was just a savings coming every, every?
Strictly a savings, just a refinancing.
Thank you, I wanna make sure that was on the record.
Yep.
Thank you.
Questions? Looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve Bill Number 2634, creating an ordinance authorizing the issuance of, issuance by the city of its 2011 consolidated tax revenue refunding bonds.
We have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve Agenda Item 6.1, Bill Number 2634. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Moving on to 6.2, consideration and possible approval of the executive contract for Tracy Dominguez Parks and Recreation Director, Chris Severson.
Good afternoon, Chris Severson, Human Resources Manager, or excuse me, Employee and Customer Relations Manager, for the record. I'm here before you to present the employment agreement for Tracy Dominguez as Parks and Rec Director. I believe you have the agreement and the recommendation in front of you, I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions for Chris or questions for Tracy? Ms. Ratty?
Just a comment that I'm always excited when we can promote from within, and my experience working with Tracy on the Parks and Rec Commission has been nothing but positive, and so I'm excited that she's willing to step up and take this role, and would be thrilled to make the motion, I move to approve the executive contract for Tracy Dominguez, as presented by Steph.
Mr. Lawson?
Second, on all accounts.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve the contract with Tracy Dominguez. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Congratulations, Tracy, it's, echoing what Julia said, I think one of the benefits of working for the city of Sparks is once you work in a department, if you have the want-to and the wherewithal, you can become the director of that particular apartment, department at some time. I know you lost a friend that used to run the department, but thank you so much for stepping in and taking his place. Go ahead, say a few words if you want.
Well, yes, we, I think we all lost a, a good director, and I wanna thank you for the opportunity and the, the encouragement that I've received to take on this position. I had hoped maybe one day to have it, but not in this way, but you can't, there's nothing you can do about that, but I'm glad to be here, and, and most of my family's out of town, but I wanted to thank my dad, who gave me the courage to pursue recreation and administration when he really wanted me in management information systems, since he was footing the bill at, it was really hard to tell him I wanted recreation. And, you know, he gave me the independence and, and the will to do what worked for me, so I thank dad for that. I do have my husband Frank with me today, gotta thank him for his support and patience over the years, 20 years, and I'd have my kids here, but I'm a stickler, they're in school today. And also Stan for being a great mentor and friend through the years, we worked a long time together, and I, I hope I do well by everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy, appreciate it. Okay, next, the 6.3, consideration of possible approval of the executive contract for Neil Cruts, Community Services Director.
Good afternoon, here to present to you an employment contract for Neil Cruts, Cruts for the position of Community Services Director. As you recall, we combined the two departments of Community Development and Public Works into one giant job, and we're here today to approve a contract for Neil.
Questions, comments? Motions? Mr. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to thank Neil for stepping up to the plate, it was a big challenge, I'm sure, combining two departments, and I'd just like to thank you for stepping up to the plate. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive contract for Neil Cruts as the Community Services Director, not the acting one, he said that earlier, that he's acting, I will make it official.
Not acting anymore. Second, Mr. Lawson?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kerrigan, seconded by Mr. Lawson, to approve the contract with Neil Cruts as Community Services Director, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Martini, members of the council, for the confidence that you are, are showing in me and appointing me to this new position for the city. It is going to be an incredible challenge, but one I look forward to, to meeting. I have enjoyed more than 14 years in working for Sparks and found it to be a place that constantly provides me with challenges throughout my career, and here we are yet again, so thank you very much for the opportunity.
Neil, if it, if it wasn't gonna be a big challenge, I would've applied. Thanks for stepping up, I appreciate it. Okay, 6.4, consideration and possible approval of the city's five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 1112 through 1516, beginning July 1, 2011. I was wondering why you had to tie, I should've known you'd be here today.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Chris Cobb, Capital Projects Manager, for the record. I'm here before, before you today requesting approval of the five-year CIP for fiscal years 1112 through 1516. First, I really gotta thank those in the Finance Department for all their assistance, specifically Mary Jo Testan and Trish Kuehl, couldn't have done this without them, as well as several of the departments. Worked hand-in-hand, our, our maintenance staff really helping get a handle on our facilities, members from our Police Department, Fire Department, Parks Department, Tracy Dominguez and Rick Darby were critical in that with getting the Parks Project, so truly appreciate all their help and assistance, this wouldn't happen without their involvement at all. The CIP is, is as was presented at your council budget retreat, held on March 7th. The total CIP is approximately $21 million in next year's FY 1112. With overall approximate breakdown, we're gonna have about $4.8 million in expenditures planned for the Transportation Fund, we have about $1.9 in the Capital Projects Funds, 1404 and 1405. We have about $1.5 million planned in Parks Fund 1402, and then about $2.4 million planned through the three Parks districts. We have about $600,000 planned right now for their Victorian Square Room Tax Fund, $325,000 with the Municipal Courts, $7.8 million in our utility-funded projects, $900,000 in the Motor Vehicle Fund, and then we also have right now planned $400,000 in the CDVG area. This is still subject to the federal budget, obviously. We're still waiting to see what comes out of there, no different than state budget, and what we'll actually get out of that. That would be one area that you might see a change and obviously a drop. I'd be more happy to answer any questions you have specifically with CIP at this time.
Questions? Mr. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, on the Victorian Square Room Tax 1415?
Yes, sir.
Why isn't that in the redevelopment?
It's a separate funding source that comes in.
Yeah, it's out of room tax.
Yes, sir.
What's the one out of the redevelopment one, then?
Redevelopment is through taxes that come in specifically the properties for the redevelopment fund.
So, that's just the property tax one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Why does this have to be approved today, I mean, this is the city manager, and why can't this be approved along with our final negotiations on the final budget for the city?
Honestly, I believe that's a question for Mr. Carey.
For the record, Neil Cruts, Community Services Director. Strictly speaking, you, you are not required to approve this today. We brought this forward to you because we are in a position where it's, it's ready to be considered for approval. I understand that as you go forward in, in your discussions of the budget and, and where to spend the limited dollars that you do have, that some prioritization may come from that. If you'd like us to speak to that, particularly to some of those financial policies of, of putting general fund dollars into, into specific city accounts, I think we can, we're prepared to show you how we would try and, and handle those in terms of ranking projects to move forward with. But strictly speaking, you are not required to, to consider this today, we're, we're here because we're ready to be here.
And we began to do the, the CIP ahead of the budget document, largely because it's a complex document, takes quite a bit of time with all the accounts and the spreadsheets. Finance takes the time from today to begin the data entry part of this. If we do it all at once, they're hit with the burden in finance of doing the state budget along with doing the CIP, and so it's just with our streamlined staff in our process to bring it to you ahead of time. If there are, if there's a desire by the council to continue to the next meeting, that's certainly your prerogative.
Let me explain my, my concern on this, is that by all accounts, I believe we're still a million to a million and a half short on balance in the general fund budget, based upon information everything we have today. Is that correct?
We have filed a balanced tentative budget for next year, and I would be bringing forth the manager's recommendations, along with some alternatives that the council will want to consider, but I do wanna make it clear, we have followed the council's policies and filed a, a balanced budget for next year. The questions that will come to the council on May 9th as part of the manager's recommendations, try to put forth what is the belief of this city manager as the best decisions in all of the budget areas that we have discussed in the three budget workshops so far this year, and we use that opportunity on the 9th to give you the opportunity to look at it, come to a consensus and give us direction, and then we use the time between the 9th and the 17th to, to build into the budget document your final alternatives as you provide the direction on the 9th, and that allows us with our staff to complete the process timely for the state.
And I guess my, my concern is that we, we have a balanced budget, and I used the wrong terms here, in the budget that we have filed makes assumptions that we have labor concessions on down the line, up to about a million and a half dollars, so there's that, those concessions have not been approved at this point, and so we have, the budget we filed has a bunch of items in it that we're assuming are gonna happen. Come Budget Day, when we have to make the final opinion, the final budget, if we don't have those budget concessions, then we have to do alternate methods of balancing the budget. And my concern is that every, once we approve this, this takes this off the table, and this is, you know, a huge amount of money here, and I know some of these funds are locked, it can't be used, some of these funds are general fund items that are council-approved to, that can be made, and funds that can be diverted from capital improvements to, you know, employee salaries and things like that, so by doing this today, we take this option of being able to move any of this money away from capital improvements, and I think that that's a box that I'm not interested in getting into, I wanna have everything available for me on Budget Day that I can make decisions, you know, on the whole budget, and not say, this is the amount we're spending on capital improvements, that's off the table now, now go balance the budget, find the money.
My understanding with the process, Mr. Carey, correct me if I'm wrong, if you approve this today, you would still have the ability to amend the CIP in the future to meet any budgetary issues that you may be faced with that, if we don't get the concessions.
See, this isn't all a one-day affair, when all budgets should be approved, you make the, the money transfers and stuff in and out as you want to do as one budget, not approve that you're gonna spend this money, and then it's built into the budget, you've still got a hole there to come up with, so I'm not, I'm not in favor of this coming for us today, I think this should be a complete package for the, for the budget at one time. You know, I, I don't know, I think it's good that we lock this, or appear to have it locked up for a bargaining tool that we have in the future with asking for concessions and things, I mean, the less we have locked up, the more opportunity there is for people to turn down the concessions we want, so I know we can change this later, but I'd rather get it locked up now and have it ready to go.
Part of this too, if you, if you look at the Capital Projects Funds, it's no different than our homes. These are, we have, I believe, 12, 13 facilities now that we're trying to maintain and keep open, they all provide a service to your citizens. This is your primary source of funding for keeping those buildings in such repair that we can provide a service to our citizens, that's what we're here for.
Mr. Carey?
Just to regiterate, it is not, it is not being taken off the table by the city council, you have full authority over your budget as it comes forward. This has been done for many years because of the volume of the CIP. If you combine those two presentations and the work involved with those, it just takes our focus away from... our focus away from being able to focus on the final recommendations. It is your purview on the 9th and on the 17th to amend and change any portion of the budget, until such time as you have a successful motion, we await your direction.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, Ms. Ratty? Had to make sure you were on the screen, I can't recognize unless you're on the screen.
Yeah, and I...
It's hard to see, that's me too.
It is.
Is that me right there?
Yeah, but she clicked in.
I've had mine for several times, it didn't show up today, so I don't know what's going on there. Go ahead, Ju.
Are you okay?
No, no, I'm, I'm having a problem.
Pushing button.
Okay.
I'll get in there sometime.
Thank you.
You know, one, one clarification, I think maybe it has to do with too many microphones being on, it locked one up amount, because now you're coming up on there.
I'm going to plug this, this whole system in a minute.
So, so what I heard, what I think I heard, and maybe I can clarify, get clarification on this, is that one of the, one of the upsides, one of the pros of doing this now, is that the Finance Department, which is a smaller staff than it's been in the past, is able to get started, and I imagine that they get started with the ones, the accounts that there's very little flexibility on in terms of just a process of getting them into a system that they can move forward with. And then the second thing that I hear is that we're able to then amend the CIP at any time, including based on any decisions that we make in the retreat. So what I don't like is when our process slows down staff, particularly now that staff is a lot leaner than it used to be, and so if, if what you're telling me is that by approving this today, our finance staff can get started, but still maintains the flexibility to be responsive to us on the 9th, then I would rather move forward with it so that they can get started.
Mr. Carrigan?
What, what, how much of the general funds in this? Because I'm trying to find it, all I'm, all I'm seeing is fuel tax and all kinds of other things.
The primary funding and, for general fund in the CIP is in your Capital Projects Fund 1404. If you look at page nine of your draft CIP, you'll actually see a, a line item there for additional general fund transfer, which is $1.3 million going in there.
So it's 1404?
Yes, sir. And that is shown on page nine.
I'm, I just want to put it on the record, I have no problem with the CIP passing right now, except for 124051, that, that's the plaza enhancement, and I think I've been voting no on that the entire time. So if the maker of the motion wants to get this passed, they may want to leave that one out till down the road.
You can make a motion. Did you make a motion?
No.
Okay. More comments? Ms. Ratty?
So I'd be looking for a refresher, so we've voted to approve the plaza improvements, and they're in the CIP now, and so what, what you're suggesting is that you'd like to look at it again?
What I'm suggesting is, I'm just, not that I'm counting heads, but there's four of us, and if you want to go all or nothing, this will not pass, I'm guessing. But what I'm saying is, I have no problem with the CIP, except for that part. And then when you bring, and so if you're going to bring it back, we can look at that at our budget on the May 9th, correct?
Okay, so we would be not disapproving of it, we would be tabling it?
Right. You want to prove everything except that, that one part, right?
Right, because it, it would do me a favor, because otherwise I'm going to vote no on the entire package, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I understand, so I'm, I'm happy to go there, as long as it's tabled and not disapproved.
Make that your motion.
I think you have a comment from the city manager.
If it, if it helps, I would prefer you just continue this to the 9th, and we'll, we'll deal with that at a staff level, that way you can look at it when you're looking at the budget, and have the discussions with everyone present, we'll, we'll take it on, no problem.
Okay, so then I would move to approve the CIP, I'm sorry, move to, to continue the CIP until May 9th.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Carrigan, okay. It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to continue this item until the May 9th meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you gentlemen. Next is public hearing items, public hearing discussion, possible approval of the bargaining agreement between the City of Sparks and Operating Engineers Local Number Three, non-supervisory unit. You want to address both of them at the same time, then we'll vote individually?
Sure.
Okay. Is that okay with Ms. Attorney? Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm still Chris Severson, and I'm...
Still?
... Being Customer Relations Manager. I've asked Steve Driscoll and Neil Crutts to join me because they were a part of the negotiating team, along with support from Administrative Services and Finance Department to help us get through the negotiation of the Operating Engineers Local Three contract, as well as the Supervisory and the Non-supervisory. Before you first, you have the Non-supervisory Agreement, which is Agenda 7.2, I'm sorry, Supervisory, I keep getting confused. 7.2 is Supervisory, 7.3 is Non-supervisory. 7.1... Can I start over? Can I start over? I'm Chris Severson, Employee and Customer Relations Manager, and with me is Steve Driscoll and Neil Crutts, part of the city negotiating team. Obviously, I'm not the detail one. Agenda Item 7.1. Are you in deja vu?
Bingo Long's Traveling Baseball Show.
I have to say that this has been a long, these have been long contracts to negotiate. The contracts did expire June 30th of 2010, so these contracts are for last year as well as for the 1112 fiscal year. The crux of both contracts is a 6% wage reduction, permanent or 6% reduction in pay, as well as any future PERS increases or decreases going forward, shared at 50%. There are some other minor contract changes that you'll see before you, but the salary concessions are certainly the, the big-ticket item. So we're here to answer any questions.
Maybe you better ask them.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions at all, but I, I wanted to say thank you to staff for all your hard work on this item, all the members of OE3 and their management team and stuff, because I think this is, this laid out at the beginning of the year, started in July, what we were looking for at this time, and they came through and, and did it, and these makes real easy contracts to, to approve, and everybody can reach a, a good agreement on something like this, so thank you for everybody.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, I want to echo what Ron just said. It was a long draw and out, I'm sure, and we can't ask for more than this, and this is the first union to step up to the plate, and I want to thank them. We're, we're all in the same boat, we're just bailing as fast as we can, and I just want to thank OE3 for stepping up to the plate, and there is a reopen for healthcare in there too, correct?
There is.
Okay, great, and I hope that they take a real hard look at that, because I think that's a better way to go, so.
On a side note, we did have a meeting last week with the Healthcare Committee, and we requested that members of the bargaining units, negotiating teams come and hear the presentation, so that's moving forward.
So if this is a paid political announcement, I think they really should look at that, because I think it's a better deal for them, so, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, 7.1 is a public hearing item, so I'm going to open the public hearing, anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for action. Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bargaining agreement between the City of Sparks and Operating Engineers Local Three, Non-supervisory Unit for a contract period of July 1st, 2010 to June 30th, 2012.
Do you have a second? Mr. Carrigan? Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to approve Agenda Item 7.1, which is an agreement with Local Engineers Three, Non-supervisory Unit. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Ms. Ratty? Pay attention. Passed unanimously. Okay, 7.2 is a public hearing item, I'll open the public hearing, anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Looking for a motion or questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bargaining agreement between the City of Sparks and the Operating Engineers Local Three Supervisory Unit for the contract period July 1st, 2010 to June 30th, 2012.
Do you have a second? Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to approve 7.2, Local Three Operating Engineer Supervisory Unit Contract. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Number nine, comments from the city council, city manager. Mr. Carey, you have some announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do in fact have some announcements to make. The City of Sparks has committee openings, and these are for committees where terms are expiring on June 30th. We currently have two appointments to the Civil Service Commission for a three-year term, we have four appointments to the Advisory Committee for the Disabled for a two-year term, we have three appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission, all for a three-year term. In addition, we have one appointment to the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority Board of Trustees. This term will expire June 15th, and that appointment is for a four-year term. There is also a current vacancy on the Airport Norris Advisory Panel for a term that will expire on December 31st, 2012. Persons interested in any of these committees should complete a community service application available from the Sparks City Clerk's Office. You can also apply online at the city's website, which is www.cityofsparks.us. Please use the Governing tab, go to Boards and Commissions, and get involved. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any other? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
So I guess that's me. I'd like to call to order the Redevelopment Agency Meeting of Monday, April 25th.
Chairman Smith, or Chairman Ratty?
Here.
Agency Secretary Patterson here, agency members Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Carrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Chief of Administrative Officer Carey?
Here.
Deputy Agency Attorney Iting?
Here.
Looking for consideration of the minutes of Redevelopment Agency Meeting on March 28th, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Moved by Council, or by Mayor Martini? Seconded by Councilman Carrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes?
One...
Oh, sorry, was there?
Public comment?
I missed public comment, just rolled by, pass that. Anybody like to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to Item 4, Consideration of the Report of Claims and Bills Approved for Payment, March 10th through April 6th. Oh man, I just jumped past everything. So apparently I need to approve the agenda too, so can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mayor Martini, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, so now we're going to the Report of Claims and Bills Approved for Payment. Can I get a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Mayor Martini, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have the capital improvement plan, but I would assume based on the action of the city council, we'd be looking for a motion to continue it.
Move to continue this item until the May 9th meeting?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any comments from the agency administrator? All right, seeing none, we're adjourned.
Good job.